One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, the agenda is approved, approved the minutes from March seventeenth.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
First and second, any more comments and minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we move down to the claims. Go ahead.
Okay, um, general claims were a hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. One, four, five, seven, five, two point five three. And drainage was eighty-five hundred, eight-five-zero-zero-point-zero-zero.
Second. Obviously seconded.
Okay, first and second, any more comments on the claims? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, claims are approved. General public concerns.
I have a general public concern. Again, I just wanted to ask the board if they had the opportunity to review our proposal from the river development group. Taking this consideration, letting us take over the management and care of Jolies, Notre Dame. We're not asking for money, we're just asking for the opportunity to try and make Lake Nukemus recreational again. Thank you.
I did stop down and talk with the insurance people, visit with them a little bit about it, so.
Good, thank you.
Uh, okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to Todd.
Okay. Weather this weekend may not have felt like it, but spring is close. So I'm here today trying to get my seasonal part-time positions filled. For the first one, um, the conservation board met last week and approved hiring John Riles and Monte Hokus at the rate of twenty-two seventy-five an hour. Just looking for your approval, those guys have been, let's see, I think Monty's been with me eight years and John, I think is going on six, so. Kind of redundant, I guess, go through this every year, you gotta hire him and fire him at the end of the season, but. I, good, good help is hard to find, and I wish Ben were here, because I think Ben would back me up on that.
Yeah, good help, I agree with that.
Those guys do a fantastic job, so I think we're very fortunate that they both wanna come back.
Yep, exactly, well, I'll make that motion to hire part-time um, positions, John Riles and Monte Hokus.
Monte Hokus, yep.
Let me say that right, okay.
I'll second it.
There are a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, now we have hired camp hosts.
On the camp host side of it, um, advertising reminder, social media, uh, have three physicians and had three applications. So, with that said, people that did last year all wanna come back.
Oh, wow.
So.
That's a big job.
Very, yeah, yep. They'll do a great job, it's not a job I think I would wanna do or would be very good at.
Yeah.
Um, kind of on call seven days a week and answer any Bob, you can't, it's a, kind of a.
I, I wouldn't wanna do it, they gotta clean the bathrooms and pick up all the garbage after people who don't really care.
Fires, I mean, there's some compliments, but if anything isn't quite right, the camp host is the one that's gonna hear about it and deal with it, so they're all just wired to, I don't know, be a good camp host, do a good job, we don't have any complaints.
Campground police.
Yes.
If somebody gets a little out of hand.
And maybe tell them the same people, the names of the people who we, you got.
Um, Kathy Eubin is at Sheldon, um, her rate of pay would be four hundred per week. Rhonda Vincent is at Dodge, the rate would be four hundred. And then Wendy Johnson is at Sheldon also, and she takes care of like the highway camping area at Sheldon lower area at Sheldon. Sheldon's just, kind of a, it's just a lot for one person.
Yeah.
Super busy, which Bob can vouch for that, so we decided to kind of try to split that up a little bit to make it more manageable. And again, honestly, that what they're getting paid, it's, ah, the county's getting a pretty good deal.
And what, who is the third one again, I'm sorry?
Uh, Wendy Johnson.
Wendy, okay.
And she's at three fifty.
Okay, there's our camp hosts.
Um, I'll make that motion to hire the ca- three camp hosts.
I'll second it.
There are a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion possible action on conservation board opening.
Hey, I guess I don't know if you guys have caught me, but Tate Saturn, um, heard in his resignation letter last Thursday. Um, been on seventeen years. It just felt like was a good time for him to step away, he said. Trying to maybe slow down a little bit in his life, I know he spots some property down by Boone and kinda wants to maybe spend a little more time there and just kind of relax a little bit, so. Um, I wish him well, thank him for all of his contributions.
He's done a great job, we really appreciate everything he's done for us.
Passionate about whatever he does.
He does good research too, which is nice.
Yeah, he does, he does really good research.
I know, that's helpful.
Yeah.
So, as a result of that, we have an opening on the board. Taylor Peterson had reached out to me a couple other times, well, over the past several years about being interested or wanting to sort of on the conservation board. Ah, I don't know if you know Taylor, works for Jensen Builders.
I do know.
I don't know for sure, if you want him on the board, he's pretty outspoken. Yeah.
Hey, you need that.
Does some hunting, uses the trail, does a little camping, just a, I think a very strong, well-rounded candidate. Um, he said he would be willing to fill Tate's remaining term.
When does that expire, his term expire?
He was just appointed last, would be January twenty-four. Five-year term, so you do the math. Four years, basically four years, three years.
Yeah, twenty-nine then, okay.
So, and I guess unless you have somebody else in mind, um.
I'll make a motion to have Tyler Peterson fill in for Tate Saturday for the rest of his term.
I'll second. We have a first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, anything else, Todd?
It's only that for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So when do the campgrounds open up?
April first.
April first, oh wow.
It's pretty quick.
Countdown is on.
Yeah, it is.
Now the rain, now the rain will start because of that.
Yeah.
Guaranteed.
And no more snow.
Yeah, hopefully not.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, uh, probably should go into drains for this, suppose, Trish.
You're canceled.
Actually better.
I'll make that motion to go into drainage.
I'll second it.
There are a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, we're in drainage. Alrighty. Would you like to? Just, just introduce yourself.
Mark Fear, I'm a tenant for, with NJF Farms, we're farming the Archer property, um, in Rockland, seven, eight. And Mark Thompson is our manager for, for it, but, uh, we entered in, into at least to farm that organically, and when we did that two years ago, we um, requested that it be patterned tile, because it's a really wet farm and there's just no way we can farm organically, I'm gonna leave the door, that's mechanically, if you can get in there, so. As we looked at that, um, when we got there the first year, two years ago, in the fall, we terminated the corn stocks. There was two, two or three washouts actually in the east quarter on this tile main that had to be fixed, and then this past spring, another two washouts appeared, and again this fall, there's more, and it's, and it's, so there's a, I think, a, a twenty, I think they call it eighteen, we were looking at the map, one of them's called it a fourteen, one called it an eighteen, I'm sure it was really hard to find. Um, but then you have the old tile back about seventy-five years ago, they put a relief main, it sort of went parallel with down the road, it got more dirt over top of the tile, so it's not pulling out, but, yeah. But it looks like on the south end of our property, it crisscrosses the relief main and the old main. And I would really like to know if, if that old main, if they tied in, it goes into Hunter Marks, found. Going partly south, this water is all drained at north. And right at the end of the property, it looks like on Beacon, you know, with the tile happy, they crisscross, now I don't know, did they literally put a cross there, or did they, if I was fixing it, I probably wouldn't even, you know, there was a fourteen, eighteen inch main, whatever it was, and then you're still twenty-four in, and that's bad, why would you hook? You know, I could see hooking the old main back up to, to bring water in downstream, but why would you put a cross and keep it going? Dude, that, you know, maybe they did, maybe they did, I can see the laterals in part, the Archer property coming into it, and then Mark Scow, yes. Either way, we'd like to put a new main, you know, to drain, obviously that thing keeps going out, like to eliminate that if possible, because it just keeps like it had, it had these big holes.
Well, the, the old main was probably early nineteen hundreds.
Yeah, wasn't it like, um, I know there was some work done, it was in like nineteen sixty-six, but it was early nineteen hundreds.
For the, for the original.
Yeah, it's hard to tell if it crossed, or if they just eliminated the old tile, it's just, it's really hard to tell on the map, so we didn't take a look at that, but, um. And then Mark Thompson had come in, um, I mean, we thought about doing possibly a petition, or I don't need to, that's all right, Archer, it's in there, or it's in the center.
We thought about, well, so, when I got them, talked to you about a week ago, I went and just ate Hunter Mark, because you guys, I mean, you know, obviously, he seems to, to know about everything the county does, seems that way, well, soon as we started farming, farming, we got acquainted, Dave, he moved across the field. We were doing a few things, Dave was just kind of, wondering what's going on, but I think he's, he's, he's a game to have a new main too, he understands, he'd really like replace the main the whole way. Uh, Luft and Sons, both are honest, is doing some work for him, we thought about having Luft do something for us, but thought about sort of doing a neighborly, or you know, you can
And privately.
Do a little cheaper than maybe having the county do it, but it's really not that, we're talking a mile of tile too, I mean, it's not like it's it shouldn't be that big a project, but Dave, I think, has been burnt once, doing a private thing, I guess, I don't know.
Well.
He, he would like to do it the county, he, he liked it engineered and done right, and, and, and all fairness, Mark Thompson's, you know, he manages for the Archer property, he, what he's concerned about is i- if we put our own main in and just bypass this, let's just say twenty years now, and go flying, Hunter Marks kids wanna put a new main in then, and then they foster it, and now she's gonna get assessed for another main, and she didn't really need it, because she's not even hooked up to it, but so if we just put one new main in right now and everyone gets assessed right, then they don't have to worry about getting, you know, assessed again, it's still.
Well, here, here, the, the part when you, a county does a project, it, it, everything's recorded. That's, that's the best part about it.
Sure.
And down the road, if there's any disagreement between who's benefiting, a non-biased party decides that. So, it, it eliminates a lot of issues down the road, for repair and maintenance and things like that, so. I, I believe a county project is a better way to go than the private in this case.
And I'm guessing that twenty-five, or that, that new twenty-four they put in seventy-five, that's, man, I'm guessing that's good, they leave that there, just, and another one on, but, you know.
But for sure, get rid of the old, old, or crush that one.
We've been, and these things in Palo Alto, because she's brought a few times, I've my grandparents, my dad, and so I, I know these things take time, and I, I even told Mark Thompson, we need to be on this earlier, no, we need to do this, and he pushes it off, but, I said, we, I, he said, if you're too busy, why don't you go take it, you know, and start doing it, so that's, that's why I'm here, yes, alright.
So do we need to start with a petition then?
Yeah, that'd be the correct way to start.
That's what Mark was wondering, what you guys would recommend.
Start, how? Start with a petition.
Sure.
And then what we've done in the past, we have projects that, you know, we look at the area, if there's enough people in the area that agree with it, we'll sometimes, or I should say, don't agree with it. We'll have like informal hearing, get the neighbors to come in and just visit, you know, both everybody's in favor of it, then we'll push it forward. Because we don't wanna waste the, the district's money on something that isn't gonna make it. You know, to go through an engineering report and all that cost.
Right.
So, that, that probably what I'd recommend is getting a petition, we'll do an informal hearing with the landlords and get their opinion, but there's something that needs to be done, and then we'll if they say, yeah, it needs to be done, we'll move forward with it. So.
So they have, so one of the questions, I mean, you know, the county private should be recorded, we can't seem to find how that connection was made. I guess, it may be it's recorded, we just have found it in the basement, or I, I don't know, I'd be.
I would bet they're connected.
I?
I would bet they're connected, because they, we find that a lot of these projects, where they crisscross, and every time they crisscross, they're connected.
Just connected back up, sure, yeah. So, yeah, it just needs to really be, I mean, uh, we've only been there, yeah, a couple years, it's been like six different
Spots.
And I think over the years, it's been, Mark's managed it for a while, he said it's been fixed a lot, and sometimes they put plastic upside it, so now, it was a fourteen, now it's a twelve, which restores it, which makes it a lot faster. Every time you're, you know, it's just a, sort of disaster.
Yeah.
They'd like to, of course, obviously, we'd like to tile it this fall, so I mean, it's, I don't know, if the timeframe, if that would allow that, we'd like to keep it all moving if possible, I guess. Appreciate it, I guess, so. So petition, one signature, or what would it take to, to get?
Two.
Two, takes two signatures, yeah.
Man, if you can get Dave to sign on, that solves a lot of problems.
I was just gonna say, yeah, if you can get Dave.
Probably the other larger.
Yeah, I would say between archers, I mean, I just, I didn't really get a chance to look at the, the land base, how, what, what percentage, like, whether Marty gets archers, but I would.
Oh, yeah, I sent that to you, you have that, put it in there.
Yeah, what percentage that would be, that I would think would be enough that those two
Yeah.
agree that it would go through, and I think, we, we live with Mark Scow too, I mean, we, as, as neighbors, we like to, uh, do the Humming County.
And that's sort of nice about having, uh, informal hearings, at least they can come in and get their voices heard.
Yeah, yeah, trying to improve the, the area for not our generation, but even three generations now, that's where my grandparents did now, so. Try to improve the area.
Hey, Rick, well, that, the distance of that, he said about a mile of that, so at what point do we say, well, that tile is seventy-five to a hundred years old, that main? What if it goes a mile and a quarter? I mean, it, they, they don't have any choice, do we, if it's bad?
Yeah, I, I mean, we'll replace it the full length of the, the, what's required, we'll have an engineer look at it, and they'll go the distance he thinks is necessary.
He recommends.
Yeah, because I'm sure it'll have to go across the gravel road to the south to pick up that land, because there's a, a pretty good chunk of land on the south side of the gravel road that drains north.
That's fine.
Yeah, so. Any other questions? So that's what I suggest, get a petition signed, uh, we'll make a call, or Eric can make a call and see if they will sign it. Go from there. We'll try to run it as fast as we can.
Sounds good.
I think, I think it's a good time to do projects.
Yeah.
Um, well.
A lot of contractors, so a lot of these contractors can't get started early, but we allow them to come in early, and get this because, yeah, I, I can cut here around one, you know, spot. Dave says, you know, like a secret, or, and you know, I said, well, even if they got the main up to your fence and stopped,
Yeah.
that would be okay, because they did that later, the rest of it, but then at least then I could do my pattern tile, but if we do it, then I can get that drain, so it's ready to go for next spring, it would be my goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Appreciate your time.
You bet, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Alrighty, I'll look for a motion, go out of drainage, unless there's something else you wanna talk about, Mike, you wanna talk about what we looked at the other day?
We just, you and I went up and looked at, looked like it was pretty good, other than that over dig.
Yeah.
That will, what, what are we gonna do with that?
Well, there ain't nothing you can do with it.
Let herself in.
Yeah.
What about downstream, you, I mean?
Well, we'll have to go out and look at that, and hopefully the snow will be gone here pretty quick. There's a section that was requested to be cleaned out. And I think we should have a hearing on that, due to the fact that borderline fifty thousand plus.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's fifty, sixty thousand, so.
Yeah.
Uh, finally it'll bump over the fifty thousand.
At that point in time, do, do we just go with who we got, or do we bid it out, or do we do the bid process?
Uh, you can choose up to two hundred and six thousand dollars, before you have to go to a bid.
I didn't know what that number was, yeah.
And at the hearing, you know, the farmers can voice their opinion, do they want to do it too?
Sure.
You know. Alrighty, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to go out there, and each, like a good.
First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move it down to, a little bit early for the public hearing. We have to wait till nine, don't we?
Yep.
Alright.
Set your stuff.
We'll get dropped down, do the, um, real big eight.
Uh, I think that one's a set time too, but we can do the stuff that we said at nine fifteen.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
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 Good morning.
I'm here.
Oh, he's got his video off, uh-oh.
Yeah, he did.
He did.
Okay.
Got home Saturday, I can't believe it, I know.
Uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county's right-of-way from Mid-American. Uh, they're looking at redirecting power to twenty-seven fifty-six, two-hundred-and-seventieth street. Uh, they'll be switching overhead line that runs through a field to underground.
Okay. Everyone in order?
Yes.
I'll make that motion to approve Mid-American's work to write. Whatever we call it, work the right-of-way, the work.
I'll second it.
Okay, there are first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have a word contract.
So we had, uh, excuse me. We had our bid letting for two bridge replacement projects last week through the DOT. Um, I believe you have an attached bid sheet on there. The first item that I've got is to award contract for DROs Perrin eighty-eight on Iowa Avenue to PCI. This is Bridge thirty-three, it's roughly a half a mile south of C forty-nine uh, southwest of town. Uh, we had five bidders, uh, very competitive, there was thirteen hundred dollars separation between the top two bids.
Like they're hungry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prices are up a little bit from last year when we let our culverts, but still cheaper than they were two years ago.
Well, the three were very close.
Mm-hmm.
Progressive Structures gets one and PCI the other.
Yeah, so we have to award the contracts each separately, for the.
If everything's in order, Ben, I'll make a motion to accept PCI's bid.
I'll second.
Yep. Excuse me, I have a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to award the contract for BROS Perrin ninety on Texas Avenue to Progressive Structures, this is Bridge number thirty-six uh, on Texas. It'd be a mile west of Hardy and a half mile south. So, right by Dean Kittley's old earth home. So.
Dean Kittley's the next house down.
I'm sorry, Dean's was
Cole House.
Cole House was the earth home, Dean's was the next one over on the west side of the road.
Yeah.
Yep.
Luckily, you can buy tens after.
Yeah, this is a little bit larger structure.
And that ditch was cleaned out too many years ago, so.
It's in good shape.
So are you familiar with this progressive?
They've done, uh, they've done one structure for us in the past, I believe they did the one, um, down by, uh, Chantlin Blacktop. Uh, who's the owner of the craft beer?
Oh, Belkey?
Yeah, Larry, by Larry Belkey's house.
Oh, right there, just.
That one, the one right next to his house in his backyard.
Okay.
So.
So where they located it out of?
Uh, El Cater.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're local, we're familiar with, with their work, they've done, they've done good work in the past.
That was kind of a different one, wasn't it?
Yeah, it had a drop down or something.
Yeah, it was a drop inlet.
Well, I'll make that motion to award Progressive Structures for project number ninety.
I'll second, there are a first and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Don't scold her.
Luxembourg, Iowa.
That should be a pretty simple one, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, that should be pretty straightforward. Yeah, minimize the amount of pipes, things like that, so.
Discussion on seismic testing distances.
So, we've signed an agreement for this company to come in and, and do seismic testing on, um, about seventeen miles of county road in the southeast part of the county. Uh, the original agreement was two hundred and fifty-foot offsets for all subsurface tile. They started mapping the half a dozen or eight counties that they're looking at doing this exploration and started realizing the amount of tile that we have buried in north-central Iowa.
Did they not think of that, well, I mean, I'm, I'm just like, come on.
And they started realizing all of the holes that that created in the, in the survey project that they were trying to accomplish. So they came back, they did, uh, uh, some separate testing up at their site by Vincent, where they used this uh, kind of looks like a truck with a big vibratory plate on the underbelly of it. And, and they set up at multiple locations in the vicinity of the tile, directly over the top of it, and working their way all the way out to two fifty. We had all kinds of meters set up, and we've hired, uh, Alan Derbutsky as an independent engineer to come in measure the, uh, PPE values and how that would affect the, the tile, whether it would crack it and create damage to the tile. And, uh, we had a Zoom last week on, uh, the comfort level of ABE or Alan Derbutsky with proximity to the tile, and they recommended that we could get quite a bit closer without any issues, um. We haven't hammered out an, an exact distance, but they were thinking fifty feet from a tile, so. Um, my guess is at some point you're gonna see, uh, the company come back in and request a reduction in, in that original contract from two hundred and fifty feet to fifty feet from tile. Uh, I've talked to I've talked to the surrounding counties. We're thinking leaving that two hundred and fifty feet away from bridges still. But reducing the distance from subsurface tile, so. Just wanna give you guys a heads up so that when. That comes. You're aware of it.
That's mainly, they're still just gonna test on the roads, or they actually, they're not gonna go out in fields.
They're not going, nope, they're not going out in fields, they will be setting up on roads, uh it will not be hard surface roads. Everything that we've got is gravel. Um like I said, ours is seventeen miles, uh Webster's is like twelve. Uh Hamilton is about the same as us, like seventeen twenty, uh Wright County has like a hundred and twenty miles, they're. They're the lion's share of this, so for the most part, we've all kind of defaulted to what right wants. As far as their offsets.
Are they recording any kind of a surety bond or something to back up?
We've got all of that um. And I think there's. Set aside where they're covering any damages, I don't remember off the top of my head what what the timeframe is for how long, right? But. That'll be. That'll be coming to you guys shortly.
So what do you think about the fifty feet in that?
I'm comfortable with the fifty feet, I mean, we had. Uh we had one test where granted, we were sitting on on frozen ground, but we had that plate set up directly over the top of the tile. That was only buried eighteen inches deep. And we didn't see any immediate damage from the tile, I mean, that's not to say that. Eventually you would see. Settlement around it, but. We're not gonna have, we're not gonna have anything that close, I mean, anything that we have for subsurface tile.
If you're on the top.
If you're on top.
It's gonna be underneath the dish, that's gonna be a minimum.
You're talking six, eight feet.
Minimum.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I'm comfortable with fifty.
Alright. Okay, well, we're past our nine o'clock. And there's no action on that, so we'll move up to the public hearing on secondary roads budget for fiscal year twenty four point five.
Yes, so this is a budget amendment. For the current fiscal year that we are in right now. Uh.
I'll make a motion open the public hearing.
Second.
Hey, the first and the second on the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing, motion carries, public hearing is now open at nine oh three. Hey, discussion on budget amendment.
Okay, uh. This, this is a budget amendment for the current fiscal year that we are in. Um. Most of this is predicated on the fact that. The paving project that we had last summer, a majority of of the. Project was paid for in this fiscal year when it was budgeted last year. Um. We probably. It'd be questionable of whether or not we would need to do a budget amendment had they started with the local project south of Highway three. As opposed to starting up by Renwick with that project. Because of the timeframe of when the construction was done. Ninety percent of the payment for P sixty six happened after July one. Sort of boils down to, so that one point six three million dollars of a one point eight million dollar project. All happened this year instead of last year.
And the reimbursement will happen this year.
That's local. Okay, that's, there's no reimbursement on that. Uh other items are uh the the Dakota City Shed that we paid for. Um. The hundred and thirty five thousand. Um. The contract that we signed with subsurface, which was part of that P sixty six project south of Thor. That hundred thousand, uh we've got a contract with Ford Dodge Asphalt. That was signed last fiscal year. But the they had enough work lined up that it pushed us into this fiscal year, so that'll be this spring's work. That's a hundred and forty thousand dollar contract. And then. I just took money that we had uh set aside. And obligations that we had put forward for the engineering for that top line item for the two hundred thousand. Um. It's money obligated for uh Chuck Britson, uh the raise grant that we applied for. The uh new G P S equipment, the additional license for AutoCAD and the bridge bornings that were recently completed.
Do you ever get anything in writing or anything from anybody?
And for public input.
I think it didn't, we hardly ever do, but I'm just curious.
And there's um public cast to speak? Hey, hearing none?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Alright, thank you. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed at nine oh seven. Okay, now we need a motion to adopt. Resolution twenty twenty five dash oh three dash twenty four point five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll start it there.
We have a first and a second, any more discussion? Any none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now let's get a wait a few minutes for the next one.
Can we do the reset of the um?
Yes. So.
We have to buy them, we have to reset the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty six, Humboldt County Budget Hearing to eight thirty six A M. April twenty first.
What day did we have it?
We had set it for April seventh, I think.
Mine, mine will stay on the seventh, though. Right? Okay.
Cause yours has to be.
Cause mine has to be turned into the forehand.
Okay, so we need to.
And the only reason is because I'm still working with solutions on. I don't remember. Patient would have to be there.
And and this is that one where we have to um. Go with, is this a regular, just a regular one, okay, okay. Okay, I went that.
What was that time for, eight what?
Eight thirty six on April twenty first. First thing of the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want for a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to reset the twenty twenty five, twenty six Humboldt County Budget Hearing to eight thirty six on April twenty first, twenty twenty five.
All second. Well, first and a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So the date has been changed to April twenty first. Okay. Nine ten, we'll move down to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three dash twenty four. Resolution to vacate roadway in Lake Township, section three. Favorite, we know as Jerry's Land.
The change of the chairs, yeah.
Oh, hi.
Hi. Do I have to be sworn in?
Had no idea that was called Lyona and or Dakota Road. I always called it Jerry's Land.
Yeah, it was just uh. We did some, then from the past, I don't know what it was, ten years ago.
Yeah.
We started vacating, just trying to update our road records.
I think we need to go, go.
It doesn't say. Alright.
Go ahead.
We've quite a few years ago, about ten years ago about, we started cleaning up our records, trying to get rid of some of these dead end road. Uh some people were in favor, some weren't. Uh Jerry at first wasn't, and then we decided we're gonna start, we're gonna keep him, we're gonna bring him back to. And we did that for Jerry and he changed his mind. So. Uh. That's why we're here to vacate that portion of road, it was was vacated from the north quarter down to the half line. The center section. And we're just gonna vacate from the center section down to. Uh one seventieth. And then that will take care of that whole road.
Then they can maintain it.
Yeah.
You want to get rid of it, you can.
None of the maps show it, the DOT's map doesn't show it, like, we're not giving credit for that being a mile. Or or half a mile of road, like. There's no record of it other than one paper up here, and the fact that Jerry and his family knew that it was a county maintained road. So.
And we have maintained it up there, up to it for a little while, for a while, and then uh. I think we agreed that we would rock it one more time, just like putting a rock and then.
Is there poles running back to the place?
Yeah.
Yeah, so even even when we vacate, there's uh there's still uh right to maintain utilities.
Yeah, access, that's right.
And American doesn't have to remove their poles or anything.
Okay.
But nobody lives there?
No. Somebody else is buying the house.
So they're moving the house?
No.
Really, you're buying a house? Interesting, what else is there? Is it just a house or what?
There's a shed up there, is there?
There's a machine shed and uh like a.
Are they gonna, are they gonna get rid of all that down or what's the plan?
The machine shed, I already tried buying it.
Shed would make a nice sheep shed.
Okay. This is a resolution to vacate that road.
Okay, I'll make that motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash three dash two four. Resolution to vacate roadway in Lake Township.
Okay, the first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Is that a resolution, does it have a roll call?
I don't, resolutions aren't in order since you.
I'm just checking.
No, no.
Okay.
Thanks for checking, I'm Bruce. Alright, gosh, we just kinda cranked through it all already.
Thanks for all that input, Dave.
Sure, you're welcome, Bruce. Alright, we'll drop down, do the meeting.
Okay, I had on the eighteenth, I had Humboldt County Prevention, which is opioid and alcohol coalition. And then um. Uh Humboldt County Food Pantry also that day. And then we also had the um new property tax discussion with um Cole and uh. Melissa was there, yeah. And then on the nineteenth. Um, oh no, that got canceled, never mind, kitty cat forgot because of the weather, I didn't move it. Um. And then on the twentieth, I ended up zooming. Um the mental health um Zoom for um rural hills. Um it was more discussion as far as. How, how are we going to um? Move all this. There's equipment that the region has bought or that's gonna go um. Information on some things. Excuse me, um. So the state has decided that each county. Um if they loot, if they're employer of record. They will be. The ones responsible for unemployment. Cause probably three fourths of the staff of all the regions statewide. Will be terminated, terminated, and um. Iowa H H S. Decided in their infinite wisdom to do a hiring freeze because they knew most of the uh mental health people would be very qualified. For that, cause those positions. And they don't want to hire anybody from the regions. That's ultimately, they're not saying that, but that's.
That's what it appears.
Everybody, yeah, every, eh, we're not stupid, they, I think they all think we're stupid, but. But anyway, yeah, so um, yeah, so there, it was just kind of a very disheartening meeting. Um and then I zoomed the Humboldt County Board of Health on Friday morning. And really. Um Sandy's doing, and her group over in Wright County, they're doing a wonderful job. Um there were quite a few um. Tests, water tests, and then there was one well closure in Humboldt County, and they're doing a great job at keeping up and. Letting the. Rural areas know what what is available, what they can do.
We got two over there, right?
Yeah, Jamie and, I don't think Jamie's come over yet, has he? You met him? Okay, but I think he, I think they're playing on him coming, ouch, but he's been so busy. Um. Doing what he does. With the sanitation, what's that on your twentieth? Or twenty first, Friday the twenty first was Board of Health. Nope, you're good, you're good.
And you need to let me know that Rolling Stones is having meetings, cause I'm on that committee.
You must be the alternate, you must be, you're the alternate, yeah. Honestly, it should be Rolling Stones, but right now anyway, because it's just. But um.
Yes.
Yeah, me too, I wanna know when that is too.
I had a quiet week, I had nothing for last week.
Third week of the month is my crazy week.
Monday after the meeting, Rick and I went on to the two projects. D B eleven, D B eighty four. Looked down, they did over dig. On that one, we gotta figure out what to do with it, Rick's working on that thing.
Yeah.
And then the other one, we went there and he's. He's back in there, and he was up to the cab and.
Yeah.
Stuff.
I, 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 he shut it off, I says, you know, if you plant that, two more aren't gonna grow. Be buried that thing.
Oh.
Lubin thought it was down in that, that.
He was in the slope. Southwest of Bradgate, yes.
Yeah, he was down in there. Up to the track, up to the track, top of the tracks, he was slinging slop like crazy.
He's about done.
Yeah, he had, he had about twenty feet to go. But but the water had gone down at least probably three feet.
Oh, at least, the the water is.
You can actually see the outlet.
On the town now, rather than be old completely, it's it's a quarter.
Yeah, it was, it was only about this high. You know, the bowline, so.
When it dries out, I'll get pictures.
Yeah. I said, Mike, let's get out of here before he needs help.
And then Wednesday during the snowstorm, I watched uh by valuation submission training, that's part of the. Of uh learning what Chris does. And understanding it, uh tax distribution, yeah, valuation.
Oh, I thought it was the Timp District one.
No, that'll be next.
Oh.
Um. Um then the twenty first, I went and listened to Mr. Grass to talk at the hospital.
He is amazing, I never, I, he's ninety, I believe he's ninety one years old, and he could, he, the constitution, he knows inside and out. preamble, different. He was going back to nineteen seventy nine on a bill that he voted no one, he was still gonna vote no one, it was just amazing listening to him. Cause I I never believed he would be.
That sharp?
Yes.
Yeah.
There was, the other thing, there was only five people that wasn't, weren't hospital employees that that were there, five. That was one of them, so I felt, you know, pretty, pretty good.
Well, thank you for.
I've listened to him a couple of times, and I got the same impression that certainly of his age, he's pretty sharp.
Ninety one.
Yeah, he's the same age as my mom.
All right, uh Monday, I went with. Mike out, looked at his granny's issues, and then Tuesday uh afternoon at two o'clock is that city hall. For the discussion on property tax, how we're gonna deal with, so what's coming down the road. And uh that's all the meetings I had.
I thought it was a good discussion, I mean, not, I mean. All we can, all we can do is let them know how we feel and how it's.
And the thing is, will it change next year? Maybe it'll come up with something different.
Who knows, I mean, they just love messing with stuff, I mean.
There's a lot of different property tax reform bills floating out there right now.
So we don't know, we actually don't know what we're gonna get.
But we do know that we've been told to behave. Yeah, oh yeah, at our meeting.
I mean, I can see them telling you to be.
They were looking directly at Sandy when I said the shot, don't roll your eyes, Sammy.
But um yeah, but anyway. That will, I will live down infinity, I think, for that one.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about you, Bruce.
Yeah, I had a uh, I zoomed the UDMO finance meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth. Everything's pretty much normal in that, but I did have several people ask me a question in our comment about uh. The. Pay for employees versus the blizzard versus and. I guess my question was, when did the people at the courthouse start to receiving pay up there when they? When we closed the courthouse? Was that in the? Near recent future, I don't know, I didn't have an answer for him.
Pretty sure it's always been that way, Bruce, uh the employee handbook spells out. Uh Sandy, you have to look it up, it's under inclement weather.
I got married, so I have no my left and my right.
Like age, I don't know, seventeen or something.
Well, that was their question, they just said, well, how how did the people at the courthouse? How do they get paid, but yet the others are, were debating on back and forth, and I said, to be honest. As far as I know, it's, that's always been that way since I've been on the board, it wasn't something we changed.
No, it's nothing that you changed, Bruce, this is.
Okay, it's in the first paragraph. Inclement weather and worksite closing, if the courthouse needs to be closed because of inclement weather. The closing shall be called after the, the closing shall be called after the auditor consults with the chairman of the board supervisors. In the event of the, of a closing, each department will be notified as soon as possible. Employees are not expected to report to work and will be paid at their regular rate for the hours they would normally be scheduled to work.
Keep going.
Should declement weather occur before the start of the workday and the courthouse is not officially closed. And an employee chooses to remain at home, then the employee will. Will use compensation time, vacation time, or unpaid leave, leave. Employees in departments that serve the public during severe weather, including departments that provide snow removal and law enforcement services. Are expected to report to work, severe weather conditions unless notified otherwise by their department head.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Pretty clear in the handbook.
Yeah.
Well, that question was asked, and I said I would bring it up because of the discussion that we'd had. Recently, so that's the way it stated in our handbook.
Can I clear up the gray areas?
I think it clears it up really well.
The the pay during a snow event, that was in place before I started with county. I don't know how long it's.
I don't know either.
It's nothing that you guys change.
That was brought up, I mean, that was, that was in the 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 old one, so I remember that.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I think we got a weak second there.